Good evening and welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for July 7th, 2015. We do have all members of the commission present this evening. Jumping straight into our agenda, we do have one item on the consent calendar which is a minute from our June 16th, 2015 meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Jacob, second by Commissioner Prentiss.
Any discussion of the motion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Our first over carrying item tonight, Center Park Drive Residential, the applicant is asking that that be continued to August 18th. That will require a motion. Commissioner Pack.
At the request of the applicant and recommendation from staff, I move that the Planning Commission continue the Center Park Drive Future Land Use Amendment to the August 18th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Second. Squared and cubed. Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Jacob. Any discussion of the motion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Continue that to August 18th. The next item on our agenda is the Adenbrook Village, approximately 6111 West, 780 South, considering a preliminary development plan, a preliminary subdivision plan, and a preliminary site plan in an MFR zone. Garbet Man Investments, Richard Welch is the applicant. The time is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to be with you tonight, members of the commission. We're excited to be back to show you what in effect is the second phase of the Garbet Homes development plan for this section of the Highlands Master Plan, which I think is also known as the Highlands West Master Plan. We're the builder in this case. Peterson Development is developing the lots for us and so... But we're going to present to you tonight the subdivision improvements as well as any questions you might have about the products that we're delivering here in Adenbrook. So our first phase, I don't know if is there a pointer you have to bring your own?
We have one for one.
I'll see, I'll rest my hand here so if I'm shaking a little bit, you won't notice. Here is Engelfield that we already brought before you and you already approved, the first part of our planned development in Highlands West. And that is made up of 66 single-family homes. We have made the improvements just by way of reminding everyone. We installed all of the subdivision improvements in the first phase, that's 25 lots. We've started sales, we have a model, we've sold six homes there. Did you get those pictures? I brought just three photographs of the model home that we just last week or two weeks ago had a grand opening for. We're excited about our prospects there and bringing many new fine families and citizens to West Jordan City in this development. If they come up, that'd be great. I saw the...oh, there, the file. So that's our model home. We back onto the existing Ivory Home subdivision that's been there for quite a number of years. So this is the model home faces and looks north. I put in one picture of our covered porch because that seems to be important, our front door and our covered porch there. You saw a lot of pictures in your...in the approval of the different plan types that we're offering there. So there's one that actually came to be, I think it looks pretty close to the rendering that we showed you. So in Adenbrook, it's a total of 180 units. Adenbrook, the difference between Engelfield and Adenbrook is at least the boundary line is the line between the low density and the medium density in the west side area plan. And so, okay, here you can see, so 41 lots, these lots here are just a continuation of the exact same lots and product that we are delivering in Engelfield. And then as our transition to the higher-density activities of commercial...did I do that? I did?
No worries.
Of the commercial that's right here, so this is the area that Peterson has reserved for neighborhood commercial activities. And then this area, and I think we've been here as we've talked about adding the UDOT properties, the Gladstone Place Development, which is the high-density area of Highlands West Master Plan. So this is kind of the transition between those to the single-family, to the west and the higher-density activities of commercial and multifamily to the east. So we have 36 duets, we call them duplexes if you prefer, twin homes. So these will be fee simple, people will buy their lot, they just happen to be attached to the neighbor, to the next of them, but each will own their own lot. And then these are 108 townhomes, and they will all be for-sale products. We spent a lot of time on the design, we designed a product, a different product, and it had an interesting mix to it, but then we discovered that in West Jordan, it's your policy or your ordinance that you must have a two-car garage attached to each townhome. So we changed the development, changed the design and brought this in to accomplish all of those things. I think in the preliminary development plan, there are pictures of these two products. So there's the townhomes, obviously this is one of the fourplex buildings, and there's the duplex buildings. That doesn't do a lot for our colors, but maybe you can think back to the model home photograph that I showed you. And that was one good thing, working with the DRC, is that we made our duplexes and our townhomes match much better to the single-family color palettes and the look that fit in West Jordan better than the first round that we presented. So we think we made good improvements, good changes in these products that we brought to you. As you know, in the south, in the west side area plan zone, is this what you call form-based zoning?
Performance.
Performance zoning? Close, I was close. So we go through the process of, in the medium-density zone, you I'm sure are aware that the density can range from 4.5, and then if you, at the floor, then if you make certain design improvements, you can gain as much as up to nine units per acre. As you've read in the materials that were sent to you, we're proposing a density of 6.2, 6.3, depending on which number you divide by. So we certainly aren't trying to maximize the density in the medium-density zone area. We designed our project and then we went through and said, okay, what of the density buy-up provisions have we met? And you have in your packet what we thought we were providing, staff did a review of that, and we came out very close to that, but it, and we went, we felt that we went considerably beyond what even the west side area zone was asking for to get density buy-ups. And so what the numbers actually turn out to be is that we said we earned 68% density buy-up, staff opinion was it was actually 65%, but we need 40% to do the plan that we designed that we felt like the market wanted to get to those 180 units in the acreage that we have in Adenbrook Village. So hopefully you would look at that and determine that we went beyond the call to design a good product for the community. It's been a process, there's a lot of back and forth with the staff because of the, you know, the rules are laid out, but it's still until you actually do it to figure out what really have we done to earn those buy-ups. We provided nice amenities to the townhome area and to the duplex area with some top lots and open spaces and the single-family residents will have access to and be able to use the big central park that we did in the Engelfield Development, if you'll remember that. So I don't know, we could get down into lots of detail, I don't know if there are, maybe it would be better to go to questions. If you have any questions about the density buy-up analysis we did and that staff reviewed and their opinions that they came up with, repeating myself, I think we did a good job and we hope that you would also find that and approve our development.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. Just a question on the townhomes, I'm looking at my copy of this, it's very small print. On the townhomes, am I correct that the, all the duplex units are front-loaded garages and all the fourplex or fiveplex?
The townhomes are rear.
Are alley fed or rear fed?
Yeah, so that's correct, except in one little example, and that's here where we entered the project, at least from this entrance.
Oh, right.
And we were concerned that just seeing a row of garages here, which would be the case with the rear entry and then the front doors would be back here, that that was maybe too much of a garage look right at our entrance. So we came up with a plan where we can turn these around, that's not quite the right way to say it, but we get the garage and the front door, and it's a front-loaded product on just this row.
Just on the south side of the?
Yeah. Yeah, to do, well, I mean, one, it's kind of an interesting exercise that we went through. The first product we did was all front-entry, and yet in order to make that work, we needed to have some one-car garage units, and we've always had those in our other projects and done very well with them. If you, you don't want a lot of them, but a smaller percentage of the total, it has worked very well for us. But that not being allowed here in order for the economics of it all to work, to get a two-car garage in a typical townhome unit, you need to have that be rear entry and the front door be on the other side, and that's why I assume, I'm guessing that most of the townhomes you see have been oriented that way. And there's lots of advantages of the rear-entry style, it makes for the nice corridors, landscaped areas, where you have just the nice front doors as you go through the community, so...
My other question that kind of dovetails with that then, is there sufficient room on driveways on any of these, front-loaded or rear-loaded, for guest parking? Typically I've found in West Jordan, and I guess everywhere probably, garages aren't used for cars, they're used for everything else. And so is there, is there, I'm just looking for other parking places and not seeing any.
Yeah, and this drawing, which is the plat, the actual plat, so this is just showing you the actual fee simple lot that will be sold to each townhome owner. I don't know, I think probably in the landscape plan somewhere we have the site plan. But the site, so the answer to your question is that every unit has a driveway of at least 18 feet, and they're very, actually almost all of them are 20 feet long. Again, that was the goal that we worked with the planning staff to try to achieve. The other, and we have this discussion with almost every city that we develop in, there is that problem that you've described. This project with 108 units is big enough that it will always demand a professional manager. The CCNRs are written so that that is not an option, you can't turn your garage into storage. And if the manager discovers that people are doing that, they'll be notified and actually fined unless they make the changes they need to to put their cars in their garage so that those driveways can serve for the visitor parking, which is what they're intended to be. Thank you.
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just following up with Commissioner Jacob's question, that 18 to 20 feet on the driveway, does that include the sidewalk and the curb where you're entering, or you're saying it's at least 18 feet to park a vehicle outside of the garage and so it's not going to overlap into the sidewalk?
Or alley. So this is just a section of it, but as you will recall from the overall plan, the majority of our private driveways that lead to the garages are these shorter private lanes. And so the sidewalks are actually in the main public street area out here. These people will, you know, just come out and walk down the lane to get to the trail and the sidewalk and all of that.
And that row of houses where the front load that you mentioned that you turned around, that's the 18?
Yeah, if they come out, they're, so, yeah, you actually answered that way better than me. Thanks. So here's really the driveway, so the car won't ever be by the driveway.
Okay. And just to clarify, it's 108 townhomes, not 103? As I was just trying to do the math on the units? In the staff report, it says 103.
103, yeah, I'm sure, probably the one that erred.
Okay, 103?
103.
103. Probably was 108 before we decided we had to turn those ones around, and then we lost some units on that row.
And I guess just for the public record, because sometimes I've had people ask me about duplexes versus townhomes and twin homes and condominiums, could you clarify, just so we have it in the minutes? You're saying twin homes, which is akin to a duplex, that you were saying twin home and duplex? I just want to make sure. Could you please explain when you're talking about 36 twin homes and 103 townhomes, the difference?
So actually, they're both quite similar from a legal perspective, in that in a townhome, because it's not a stacked unit, you own the, your lot, just like if you had a single-family home down to the center of the earth and up to the end of the atmosphere. And that is the same on the twin home. Some duplexes that were intended to be just rentals and had that name duplex meant that it was two units on one lot. But in the duets or the twin home, it's just one unit on one lot, the lot line just happens to be a zero lot line where the two units connect to make the two. Is that, did I do?
I think that's right, I just thought it would be important.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because a lot of times, and that's probably why, marketing-wise, we've gone away from duplexes, is because that more often than not is associated with a rental where you don't have your own property line and your own lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Chad Deveraux from, also from Garbet Homes, who has been the designer of all of these units, and so we're happy to be here, and thank you very much.
Commissioner Hammonds?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. The Engelbrook or the Engelfield development that Mr. Welch was talking about is this area that's right here. So this is all single-family homes, and the proposal is to extend those homes into this, those single-family homes into this area. Those duets you were talking about was right in here, and then the townhomes would be wrapped around this area here. This is part of the Highlands Development, as you'll recall, it's about, I don't know, 370 acres, and it's the last area the city recognizes being in the west side planning area. So it's subject to west side planning area requirements. Well, my family residential zoning, these are the zoning designations you see to the east, it's high-density, to the northeast, it's zoned for commercial at some point in future, and then over to the west of the project is low-density single-family residential. There is a development that's also to the south where you see Fish Lake Drive and Lake Powell Drive. Future land use map, it's just a copy of it, it's, the zoning is consistent with the future land use map. Again, this project will be developed in five phases. Phase one will be the combination of duets and the single-family dwellings. Phase two will be down on the south end, those are going to be townhomes. Phase three, although there are no dwellings, we just basically street improvements to connect that, the street all the way through from 78th to the south. Phase four again is going to be combination, and phase five will be all townhomes. What you're looking at tonight is approval, it's basically preliminary approval of the, approval of the preliminary development plan. Second thing would be approval of the preliminary site plan and then preliminary approval of the subdivision, or the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan. The density that you recommend will actually go to the city council, city council will look at that and set that density, the maximum density for this project. So there's going to be a recommendation on that. This is just kind of showing the layout of lots, and then the single-family to the west of the duplexes and the twin homes that are located up against that culvert street, and this is the location of the townhomes. Mr. Welch did a good job of just kind of describing what the project is. There are a couple of things, there's some open spaces, one right here, the playground will be located here, a number of attention facilities, there'll also be some open space along here, and then there will be enhanced with right-of-way between the back and the sidewalk and then where the street wall goes. In terms of, we talked a little bit about the fencing for this project. What is being recommended, at least along where the townhomes are located, is a decorative metal fence. As you'll note, you know, I think on the top of page 12, we just, in your packets, we talk about putting in brick columns every 20 feet, just so it doesn't look like a cage going around there, it kind of integrates that with the rest of the development. So we'd really like to see some mason columns put every 20 feet longer just to break that up and then tie it in with everything else. Along the north side where the twin homes are, there's going to be a Rhino Rock Wall that will be located there and go up to 7800 South and be along the lots on the back of 7800 South, so that's what we're looking at on that. We talked a little bit about the buy-up density, where our numbers came out fairly close. Our recommendation, I think it's listed in your staff report, the actual density, looking at 6.22 dwelling units breaker gross and then 6.30 dwelling units breakers and that, which is less than that maximum, 7.44 dwelling units that are possible in that table. Commissioner Welch did point out a discrepancy between the agenda item, the densities in the agenda item and in the staff report, but those are the densities that we are recommending. Just wanted to make that clear. It is, the proposed density is also consistent with the general plan, as we noted in your staff report, general plan calls between 3.1 and 7.6 dwelling units breaker, again, this is a six range, so it's consistent with the general plan. Our recommendation is for approval, just subject to the approval of these three items, subject to meeting all those conditions that we listed for the two of those.
Commissioner Booker? Thank you. Did I read the staff report? I can't find it right now, but I can remember reading, the roundabout here in the center of this project is a 200-foot diameter roundabout? Did I read that in this or was I? I had a lot of Diet Coke that night.
I don't remember any number.
Okay. I was just going to ask how I compared to some other roundabouts.
Where you read it was in our preliminary development plan book, and it is indeed that big. It's because it has five roads coming into it. We had the same reaction when Bill Varonowski told us that's what we had to do there.
Does that include the width of the street?
Yes.
Okay. So the center aisle does not turn around?
No. It's the whole.
It is minus that. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Pack?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McCandless, just curious with regard to the Design Review Committee minutes, are any concerns with the added colors, amount of stucco, more relief, front porch lights? Do you feel that everything's been met?
Yes, in fact, we did those out to the revised, sort of, plans out to the Design Review Committee members, and the feedback was positive, so.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
I was just going to ask if the design, and since Josh is over there, you can answer this, if you moved on, you were the moving individual. Were the visual color palettes and everything emailed to the committee like it was supposed to happen?
Yes, it were, and they did an excellent job, I believe, it's just my own opinion, but they worked very well with the Design Review Committee to make a good, they took into account all the changes that we asked for, and even though it required them to spend probably 24, 25 hours on rendering new drawings, they did that for us just to show us what it would be like, so, yeah.
And I concur with that, if it was sent out, that looks good.
I just wanted to make sure that something, you know, it said that it happened, I just wanted to make sure it happened.
Yep, it definitely did.
Okay.
Can I repeat it?
I have just one more question for staff. Phase one of this project includes the 7800 South improvements, I believe. The 7800 South improvements on Engelfield, right, to the west, are in a much later phase, I believe, it seems to be developing from the south to the north, because I drive past it anyway. So will it be improved 78, not improved 78, improved 78, and if the project, as things get completed, or can it be done at the same time?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think phase two is coming in fairly short order. We've got the plans in on that, I think they're just finalizing some things on that, so I think it's all going to come together.
Well, to the short term. I drive that a little bit wide. Thank you.
Any other question for staff? Excellent. We'll now open this item up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item, the time is now yours. We would invite you up to the microphone, and if you would give your name and contact information for the public record, you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Hello, my name is Clint Hattins, I'm at 6232 West Fish Lake Drive. I'm in the Bloomfield Heights subdivision, and I have, my lot is right about where the duets are starting, so I just had a couple of questions. of questions for the Garbet folks. The first question I have is about how many square feet are these duet homes? The next question I had is, most of us along Fish Lake have already put in a vinyl fence. I was wondering what Garbet's plans are for a fence? If they're pottin' on putting additional fence in or are we sharing our common fences now? Or can we expect some sort of reimbursement since the Fish Lake folks are already going the cost of those fences? And my third question I have is, I have a little bit of confusion about the buffer area between the duets and the back of the Fish Lake properties. I, I understand there's, is there a PUE of eight feet or is it 20 feet? I would like to see some landscaping, some additional landscaping, some trees along that fence line. And I think, I think those are the only questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask the applicant to address those after the public hearing. If there's anybody else who would like to comment on this item? Then close the public hearing and we'll, sir, if you would come address the questions
I'm Chad Deveraux again with Garbet Homes. Want to make sure I heard the first question correctly, but you asked the size of the duet units of the lot? Do you ask the units? Okay. Okay. So the lot sizes are identified in the preliminary flats and the, the units themselves are between 1500 and 1600 square feet. They range slightly depending on the model. Plus an unfinished basement of an additional 600 to 700 square feet with two car garage. Again, you, you asked about improvement as far as a fence. And we, we offer that option to our homeowner. We don't include that in the purchase price of their home, so they would have the availability to add a fence if they would like to do so.
Yeah, I think part of that question also is how would that integrate with the existing fence if those owners did opt for the fence?
Uh, yeah, I think if there's an existing fence, assuming it's on the property line or just inside the existing property line, I, I would imagine that they would not opt to do a rear fence. I can't speak for those, those homeowners, but if we do a fence, if they were to have Garbet install a fence, it would be on their property. Again, with an existing fence, I can't imagine that scenario happening. But we would offer a six-foot tall vinyl privacy fence as typical in our communities. As far as sharing a cost with an existing fence, we can't ask a homeowner to do that.
We, we can't have extra comments from the audience that are not being captured on the recording. And I think the third question was about some landscaping in, in the buffer area there. I was writing, so I think I missed a portion of that.
The question was that he, he asked what the buffer between the back of the property and the property lot line was. And then he asked if there was going to be any type of landscaping put in along that back section, if I'm correct.
We have a plan to landscape the front yard of those homes. And again, we, we offer rear yard landscaping to the homeowners. We're, we're, there is.
Right there.
Okay, excuse me. So that would be the buffer then that's in question. So the plan there would be shrubs and perennials around the home and irrigation and sod in the rear.
Almost 40 feet. And so, so the rear yards are almost 40 feet from the back of the unit to, to the fence here, so.
Thank you. Any other questions while, while he's on? Great, thank you for addressing those. Any further discussion from, from us? I didn't hear a motion. Commissioner Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and the designs shown in the Adenbrook sub-area preliminary development plan, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the Adenbrook sub-area preliminary development plan located at approximately 6111 West and 7800 South with a residential density of 6.3 units per acre net, consisting of 41 single-family dwellings, 36 twin homes, and 103 townhomes for a total of 180 dwelling units, subject to the three conditions listed in the staff report. Second.
Who had the second? Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
There's more.
Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the Adenbrook preliminary subdivision flat located at approximately 6111 West, 7800 South, subject to the two conditions listed in the staff report.
Seven.
Sorry, seven, seven. Consisting of, there's only two on the first page, sorry. So consisting of the seven conditions locate, listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on the required findings set forth in the staff report and the information gained in the public hearing tonight, I move that the planning commission approve the Adenbrook preliminary site plan for property located at approximately 7800 South, 6400 West, subject to the following, to the two conditions listed in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Heiner. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. There we go. All right. Next item, which is the Brinkerhoff property or Google of T S O D, 7655 South, 1300 West. Mr. Gardner?
Okay, and so the city council, this, let me back up. This is the current T S O D boundary, the Gardner Station transit station boundary. This would orient to, this would be the transit station, of course, Gardner Village. The open, I think the Let's Play Soccer facility is in this area now, of course, the sewer plant over here and then single-family homes, both along 1300 West on both sides and then to the north and then, of course, the cemetery to the south. Throughout the last year or two, Colosmos have brought this project for, it was a station at Gardner Mill multifamily housing development. And of course of that process, the city council has determined that they would like to reduce or shrink the size of the T S O D boundaries by 10.21 acres, which encompasses entirely the Brinkerhoff property at the address you, at 7655 South, 1300 West. Now, the T S O D is just an overlay. The underlying zoning on the property is rural residential half-acre lots. That will not change if the council goes forward with this. What it would do is just remove that transit station boundary, which would eliminate any design guidelines and any additional uses that the transit boundary brings. And so this is conceptually what the boundary would look like at, if this is approved. It would end at the north border of the Colosmo property and at this point, then it would continue the same to the, both east, west, and south. This is a, a application that was brought at the request of the city council by the City of West Jordan Planning Department. And what the planning commission would be doing is making a recommendation to the city council on reducing, whether they feel like it is in the best interest of the city to reduce the boundaries, the T S O D boundaries of the Gardner sta, the Gardner Station, T S O D boundaries. Staff recommends approval of this. And I want to back up and say that the primary reason the council wishes to reduce this boundary is that they feel like the multifamily or higher-density development is more appropriate in this area along the corner of the Arterial Street and not so much back along 1300 West where it gets to be largely surrounded by a single-family. And so staff recommends approval of this and recommends that the planning commission make a positive recommendation to the city council.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you, sir. Just a question about the other rural residential half-acre lot parcels in there. Both, I'm, I'm assuming that they weren't included because the city council is kind of specific about this, about reducing the T S O D to this specific.
Yes, or specific 10.21 acres.
Right. Okay, so those, those would remain then in the T S O D with all the accompanying?
Yes.
Possibilities.
And as you recall, one of the agreements that the Colosmos have made with the development of this multifamily is that this corner will be reserved for a commercial piece, commercial uses and not multifamily, so.
Any other questions? Open the public hearing on this item. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this removal of the T S O D designation on this property? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Jacob?
If there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and...
We might have some discussion. Commissioner Green?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, so that everybody knew, this was, this was part of the trying to restructure and get rid of some of the high density in that particular area to help make the, the area more flow better from the, the red. I, just for the record, I live just almost across the street from this. You go out, when I come out of Barton Hall on 1300 West, I drive into this property. So this becomes a good buffer. It pulls the, it pulls the, that, that 10 acres out of the T S O D, so it can't be the higher, higher prop density, the higher, the 70-foot stuff that you, that we have in T S O D and those things. This is what the, with the, and to be honest with you, the city council actually listened to the neighbors and, and said, hey, you know, let's, let's develop a buffer, so that's why this is here. And I think it's a, I think it's an appropriate reduction in the T S O D. And it makes a good buffer when you figure that the research park designation or office designation is just to the north with the South Valley owns and with what you've got there. So I, so I, I'm just saying, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew why this was here and this was actually because the city council and the, the city staff listened to the neighbors when we went through this Colosmo stuff and the high-density project.
Commissioner?
During that discussion, was the property owner involved in that discussion and he was, they, he or she?
I'm not sure that, that Brinkerhoffs were ever involved in that property, that discussion, because I think the, the, the stuff that I've heard in the neighborhood is the Brinkerhoffs said they'll never sell the property ever. But, you know, never say never. But I, I, it, it just, it, it doesn't change the zoning, it just pulls it out of T S O D, so it doesn't make it that overlay with all the additional things that could happen in that. And I, and I think it's just an appropriate thing to do with that particular piece of
Commissioner Jacob?
All right. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to remove the T S O D from the 10.21 acres of the property generally located at 7653 through 7655 South, 1300 West.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacob, second by Commissioner Sipacchi. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item is a text amendment amending the code, Title 13, to allow gasoline service station in the CM zoning district. Four Square Properties, Dan Millich is the applicant, is the applicant present. The time is now yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the commission. Dan Millich, Four Square Properties, here to discuss this item with you this evening. You may remember I was here in June before you on the Phase 7 site in Jordan Landing. Basically introduced myself to you at that time, so I think you all know who I am and the purpose of being here is to move forward with the vacant parcels within the Jordan Landing property holdings. And this application, while it's not specific to any particular property, it's a text amendment that affects all properties with the CM designation throughout the city. We have a CM parcel on the west side of the airport at Airport Road and 7800 South. It's approximately a 10-acre site that we do have an interested gas station vendor in developing on that property. So part of my job is to create opportunities for development on these vacant properties. Proposing this text amendment was a way to do that, and so I'm here before you this evening requesting that amendment. We're in support of staff's recommendation. We work closely with staff to process the application. I would like to take one minute and just say that, you know, we've been very pleased with the efficient manner in which staff has processed our materials and their ability to work with us closely to make sure that we're hitting the marks and getting our job done so that they can get their job done. It's refreshing to see that. We don't get that in every city within which we work. So having said that, if there's any questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Why not just read on the property?
You know, we thought about that and that, that's a good point. We, we talked it over with staff. We took a, took this application, or took this site to a pre-application back in March. We talked about the alternatives that were available to us. And one of the things that kind of floated to the top was a text amendment in the CM zone. It's, it's a pretty heavy commercial zone, a, as you all know, and it's, it's one of the, well, it's, it's the only commercially designated zone where gas stations are not permitted outright. And, you know, not that we were scratching our head, I kind of was in our pre-app, but anyway, we decided to move forward this way and that this was an appropriate way to bring it before this body.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. So the proposal is to allow gas station services as a, as of right use in the CM zoning district or heavy commercial zoning district. This is essentially to correct an oversight in the heavy commercial district. Presently, gasoline service stations aren't permitted in this zoning district, even though it is considered to be a more intense type of use than neighborhood, community, or regional shopping centers in which, right now, they are permitted in those three districts. The CM district is found in three separate locations throughout the city and will affect approximately 32 separate parcels in the city. Staff is recommending approval, or staff is recommending a positive recommendation to city council in order to amend the text and allow gasoline service stations in the CM district.
I'll jump in with one question first. So going back, we brought it up in the pre-meeting that... So going back, we brought it up in the pre-meeting that CM zone that you sits up on Thirteenth and Seventy Eighth currently has a gasoline service station in that zone that we're discussing tonight. Are you aware of any concerns, complaints regarding that more intensive use?
I haven't heard of anything, no.
What's your name? Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. The gas station definition in the code is only a gas station, right? I mean, there's a gas station, a convenience store, nothing else. Having formerly worked in the gas station industry, and not as a cashier, we'll make that clear. Gas stations often have, you know, oil change places, you know, tires. Those would not be allowed, I don't believe, in this zone currently as well because repair service limited, I think is what that would fall under. Is that correct? Which is, has, if you call it an oversight, has the same gaping hole where a P might reside.
Vehicle repairs are already allowed in the CM zone, so.
Well, general service repairs are, but limited repairs, I don't know if there's a whole difference between those two, but.
I think limited is just what you're saying, oil changes, tires, brakes, that type of thing. I don't think it involves removal of semi engines and stuff like that.
Right, which ironically, the semi engine's removal would be permitted in this zone currently, but the oil changes is not. Similar oversight, I don't know, it's on page four, if you want to look at it, there's repair service limited is, got the same, not a P in a spot that this has, not a P in the spot. That sounds really bad. It's not permitted in the CM zone, just like this gas station is not permitted. So I was just wondering if we wanted to kill two birds with one stone and allow the gas station also can.
It's not a ten buys that wasn't noticed, so we wouldn't be able to address it?
Well, yeah, we, I just, I just thought that.
Maybe a word of discussion. Word of discussion for another moment.
We're killing half of the bird before we.
Second Collins.
That's really good aim.
Limited, limited is permitted, but conditional, general. There's also, there's also vehicle repair, right at the end on page.
Oh, there is vehicle repair.
It's separate, it's.
I don't, I don't know what it refers to, so it doesn't.
I gotta go look up the.
Okay. I didn't see the vehicle repair. Scratch my whole comment, back to the.
Can we strike that from the record? Excellent. Commissioner Green?
My, my question is, is the way I read CM, although it's a heavy commercial district, it all, the CM stands for commercial slash manufacturing, for lack of a better term. So my, my question on this is how much analysis was done that the reason why this was a permitted use in a CM zone to exclude a gas station had to deal with the proximity of manufacturing type, you know, commercial manufacturing type entities next to a gas station and the distances to those that could cause, for lack of a better term, explosions or anything else? Because I, I mean, when you look across other organs across the nation and everything, there's a lot of CMs that don't allow gas stations in them. And so I'm wondering if this was not an oversight, but it was actually just a, it was purposely left in that to leave the gas station out of that because of the manufacturing nature of the area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. And I wasn't involved in the initial creation of the CM district, so I can't say for certain if it was a complete oversight. When I was doing the analysis, it seemed to me like it was. The reason being is in the general commercial district, which is also located fairly close to manufacturing type of, types of uses, gasoline service stations are permitted. And if you look at page four, gasoline in fuel storage and sales are a conditional use in both the CG and CM zoning districts.
Page three.
So in the CG, you, with the conditional use, you are able to store gasoline, you can have a type of use that would allow you to store gasoline as well as selling in a type of, a convenience store type of situation.
Commissioner Jacob?
Just as a follow-up question, does that mean that this gas station would need a conditional use permit to actually sell the gas? Cause gasoline storage and sales is conditional, but the service station is permitted. So you can have the building, but you can't sell the gas unless you have a conditional use permit?
More meets the Maverick Conoco type thing. Gasoline storage and sales, I think, would be something that you could have, yes, a larger amount of fuel stored on site. That's what, that's the way I would interpret that.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner?
Thank you. Maybe just, it says that this amendment isn't specifically limited to any specific scenario and the intent is to have a gas station in convenience store. Does that open up any, do you see any problem with any precedent? You know, we're talking about the intent. This is the intent, but what if the intent isn't followed? Obviously, we've got the conditions for approval. But I'm just wondering, do you see any liability or, I guess I'm just saying, when, when you're taking this action, did you see down the road any potential problem with, with another issue that might be similar to this? When you're setting a precedent of.
No, I don't think so unless you hate gas stations and then you'll be allowing them more in the other areas of the city. And as was pointed out, there's already one that is, exists because of a prior existing use on the corner of thirteen seventy eight hundred south. And, you know, and, and gas stations are based upon market and based upon need and proximity and so, I don't see the entire zone becoming a gas, I don't, I don't see any detrimental effects to the city, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll then open the public hearing on this item. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this text amendment. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Possible motion. Commissioner Jacob?
Finally, a question. It goes back to what Commissioner Green mentioned earlier in that, you know, with manufacturing areas, is there, is there a concern with having a gas station in a manufacturing area? Now, not on this corner where this applicant is concerned, but this is citywide applicable. And down on Old Bingham and Mountain View, there's a very large CM zone there that is in a mostly manufacturing area. It's in a much more industrial area than a, than, than this corner on Forty Eighth and, or Airport, no, excuse me, and Seventy Eight. So I'm just wondering if, because this is citywide applicable, does that, is there any concerns there with, with that zone? I know we've got one up there on the, on the corner of Seventy Eight and Thirteenth and this particular applicant fits, fits well in that corner as well. But is there any concern where it is in a manufacturing area because it is a citywide applicable?
I would think it would support that type of use.
There's lots of sparks involved in the manufacturing.
Well, I certainly would hope we wouldn't place a welding factory immediately adjacent to the fuel storage tanks and gas station. I think it would, I think it supports that kind of a use, given the nature of the traffic pickups through a manufacturing district.
If this wasn't in one zone, it'd be a permitted use.
Oh, real fair. Well, there you go. That's, that's interesting.
Well, with, with that too, I mean, if, if you are allowed to store fuel tanks for your own industry in a CM zone already, then, then my personal opinion is that it's only a benefit to the area, it's not a detriment.
I would agree with that. Commissioner Skoski?
All right, well, based on the findings set forth from the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed text amendment to title thirteen of the two thousand nine city code as addressed in this report relating to the heavy commercial CM district.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Skoski, second by Commissioner Jacob. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one with Commissioner Green asking the voting votes. Item number six on our agenda is the Legacy Grove subdivision, seventy-two ninety-two south Redwood Road, considering a preliminary subdivision plat and an R one eight zone. Joshua Peterson is the applicant, is the applicant present? Sure. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
My name's Jackie Kingston and I'm a member of the Legacy Grove homeowners association. I and five of my close friends are interested in building a small community. With some common area that will include a pool, pavilion, park, playground to share costs. We were looking for a private piece of property or a flag lot that could have a cul-de-sac or something where it's safe for kids to play. We came across this two point seven eight acre lot here on seventy-two ninety-two south Redwood Road. It was affordable if we purchased it quickly because of a project that fell through shortly before that. So, and we looked up the zoning and saw that it was residential, so we felt like that we weren't really at risk purchasing it. So we did that before we went through the application process. So we're now almost a year into the planning process and we're paying interest, of course, and very frustrated due to the unknown, unknowns of a project like this. And I guess when you're not a developer, you don't understand as good as what you wish. So city code is sometimes tricky as well and can be interpreted, can be interpreted by, in different ways by different people, so. But we want to work with the city and we want to make sure everything's going to work well for the city as well as for the owners of the property. The city goals say that they want to provide a safe and healthy living environment for all citizens of the city, to ensure safe, safety, accessibility, and walkability within and between neighborhoods, implement street design standards for residential subdivisions that provide an interconnected street system, greater distribution of traffic and route flexibility and so on and so forth. Traffic calming measures where appropriate, street system should eliminate dead ends and hammerheads and cul-de-sacs except in areas where there's no alternative for connectivity. They also says that they want to plan and support an efficient residential development pattern that enhances and establishes neighborhoods and creates new neighborhoods in identified infill growth areas. So with that being said, so the city wants us to connect to the property north of us, north of ours, because it makes sense for the undeveloped properties so that they can connect to an existing neighborhood and it becomes more user friendly and makes an overall better designed city, which we completely understand and agree with. But because the undeveloped area is so small, connecting it with ours doesn't offer the other owners any benefits that we can see. I understand that connecting roads to, to not have a lot of cul-de-sacs or dead ends are better, but because the property is located on Redwood Road, both properties are, then it isn't going to be much different. In fact, there'll be less unnecessary traffic entering a private road than a no outlet or dead end, which is the worry that the planning staff had and that they had because they didn't want it to slow traffic down on Redwood Road. It also makes it easier for the male garbage to enter, turn around, and exit than to enter, turn around on Redwood and re-enter. So the city also likes streets to be public for maintenance reasons and I, again, understand why and understand why they, they try to go that route. But you can also not have a lot less than seventy-five feet wide. And where our property meets Redwood Road is about ninety-six feet wide. It probably says exactly on there, it's ninety-something. So when we take out the width of the road and sidewalk, we only have about forty-three feet left, which it, it makes it too small for a lot. So we felt like because of that, we would have to make it a private road so that it's just an easement and it's still part of the parcel. We really appreciate your consideration and we want what's best for everyone. We feel like this development will add value to the community and increase tax dollars for the city. It fits within current zoning and we feel that it does provide a safe and healthy environment for all citizens of the city. And I know that this is just a project for all of you, but for us, it's very personal and it's very expensive. And it's a huge investment that we've, that we're already into and a dream that only becomes possible with your help. So we would appreciate very much your help in making this something that we can do.
Commissioner Jacob?
Thank you. I have one question for you. And that, and that is just, have you been in contact with the property owners to the north or these property owners that own this little cutout, you know, between your property and Redwood Road on that, on that.
We have on the property next to the house on Redwood Road. We know they're not interested in selling the one after that, sorry, the one, yeah, the one after that, so there's, yeah, that one. They, I believe, just sold or trying to sell.
And not to you?
But not to, not to us, yeah. Nobody else is interested in selling it at this, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Skoski?
Just looking at the plat that, that we had on our screen beforehand, you, you said that there, if you were to make a, a U or some way to tie in to the additional property to the north, then it would, it would limit your lot size. However, I'm looking at lot six and it's, it's almost a full acre, I guess almost three quarters of an acre. What would be the limitation, I guess, for you guys if you were to turn the road and just stub it into that north property?
That, that piece in the middle there is supposed to be the common area where the pool and all of that stuff goes. And if we put the road in at one, it makes so that we don't have room for that stuff, which is the reason we wanted to do it in the first place. And it makes it not a private community anymore. It kind of defeats the whole purpose of the development.
Now, so if, if you don't stub that road to the north, then the lot adjacent to the north, should they decide to sell ever, would end up with quite an awkward road coming into it that really wouldn't even have room for a cul-de-sac to turn around.
We, we measured it out and it would have room for the same thing that we're doing. You wouldn't be able to put houses on both sides because of the setbacks, but you'd have room along one side of it with, with the turnaround.
I guess my concern is that if, if you do that, we would have two cul-de-sacs right in a row and the flow of traffic, to me, doesn't make sense. I feel like on that north lot, we would be limiting, we would be limiting future potential for, for that owner as well.
If because of the traffic on Redwood or because of the traffic inside the.
Just allow, the allow, the amount of lots they could put on, on that property.
It, it doesn't affect that because it's only wide enough for a road and one row of homes. So you could put your road in and with the cul-de-sac at the end and it doesn't, doesn't affect how many homes they can put in. We did look at that because like, we understood the concern.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll save you some time after the public hearing if there's any comments you'd like to address.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Chairman. So the applicant is proposing six single family residential lots on a two point seven eight acre parcel. Staff is recommending denial of the subdivision because of the property to the north. The property to the north includes two separate parcels with a combined total of two point one eight acres that's possibly developable. The ordinance states that subroads are required. It's section fourteen five five, that streets and new subdivisions shall connect to adjacent undeveloped land. In staff's opinion, the properties to the north are able to still be developed. They're also within the R one eight zoning district. So even though that they, they do currently have two. So, even though that they, they do currently have two, uh, houses on them, the west portion of each property, uh, hasn't met its development potential. Staff is also recommendation, uh, recommending denial because of the proposed, uh, private street. Also within Title fourteen, the, uh, subdivision code, we require that if you're at all possible, uh, able to develop with a public street, uh, that you do so. So, based on the negative findings of Finding One and Finding Four and the proposed subdivision doesn't meet Title fourteen in the subdivision code, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny the proposed subdivision.
Any questions for staff? So, if I understood that right, the concern is not so much that it's a private street, but it's the stub roads that are really the, the larger factor here.
The majority of it is the stub road.
Um, there was a mention in the pre-meeting about some, some previous history on this property and a similar application that City Council had some thoughts about.
City Council heard the AmeriCourt, uh, town home, uh, proposal and a portion of, well, it was mentioned in that meeting, uh, that the, one of the reasons for denial was that it was not being stubbed to the north.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Very well. Uh, open the meeting to the public. If there is anybody who would like to comment on this item, you would have three minutes to make your comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the Commissioner. Commissioner Jacob?
I was really hoping you'd have some public comments on this. Um, I would love to hear from the neighbors to see what their thoughts are. Um, when the Highlands master plan was being approved, and I know this has nothing to do with that, but just a story for you. It was originally supposed to, the development, just to the northwest, the northwest part of the, of the Highlands master plan. It has a five-acre parcel that a family owns and it comes, all, it makes a big old cutout in the Highlands master plan. And the original plan, well, streets came through anything else, had a stub road going into that thinking, well, someday they're gonna sell and someday we're gonna have to stub into that. Um, the property owner for that five-acre parcel showed up at the City Council meeting when that was being discussed and said, "We're not gonna sell. We're not planning on selling. You're making plans based on something we may never do." And so, the City Council, to their credit, and this was three years ago or so, took out that stub road, made it into a, a lot, you know, a house. Made the street go straight instead of teeing into, uh, what might be a future property. Um, I, I find it extremely presumptuous for us as, uh, planning commission or for staff or for anybody else to decide what the development potential may or may not be of somebody's property. Uh, somebody owns that five acre, or those two acres, those two one-acre lots right there, and they're happy with their house on the front of it and their great big backyard. I'd be happy with a backyard that size. I play baseball in mine. Uh... So, that may never develop. It may stay the way it is. And if it does stay the way it is, us saying, "Sorry, you have to change your development plan to meet..." Something that never happens, I think is, is, uh, is a little bit capricious of us as a, as a council, or as a council, as a commission. Um, specifically on criteria one, street systems should only dead end, well, hammerheads, cul-de-sacs, except in areas where there's no alternative for connectivity. As it sits right now, there is no alternative for connectivity. The people to the north aren't selling. There's no alternative to connect there. Your, your only choice is a dead-end road. It's, is it a dead end or a cul-de-sac? It's either dead end, one way or the other for the time being. So, I, I believe criteria one is met. And on criteria four, as far as the, the private street, uh, private streets are permitted when the planning commission finds they cannot, otherwise be practically developed with lots on a public street. And as the applicant's mentioned, the public street would take away from that lots, on that, those first two lots that are on that street, on the peninsula that had a flag part of the property, if you will, making that undevelopable, undevelopable on a public street, but not on a private street because you can have an easement for the road. So, I lean towards approving.
Commissioner Green?
Now, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit.
You certainly would.
On criteria one, um, it, it talks about street systems should eliminate dead-end roads, hammerheads, cul-de-sacs, when there's no alternative for connectivity. Problem is that we're gonna end up assuming that at some point in time, now, I'm gonna assume, I know, I know how that's spelled, so never mind. But if, if we assume that two-point-one acres to the north and something to the south helps that, that other cutout develops, now what we're stuck with is a whole bunch of driveways into Redwood Road that are, that's gonna be, as we, we heard on the traffic master plan several weeks ago, the worst road in the west-oriented city here in fifteen or twenty years. And we're gonna have all these, we're gonna have all these multiple streets, multiple dead ends coming out on Redwood Road. And I am not sure that criteria one is met. Uh, so, we, we may have to, we may have disagreement there. Uh, I, I'm also not sure that it's a limited infill project and so I have a hard time with the, with the, uh... The pop, with the, with the private street. I, I, I have a fundamental problem with private streets. Just because some, I, I think, and that was, it was in the staff report as well, private streets mean, if it's a public street, we all, we all take care of it. So, if there's a problem with the gutter, there's a problem with the something, the city takes care of it. We know that there's something going on. In, in this particular, if you do a private street, you get stuck with whatever, and if the HOA goes belly up or whatever and doesn't provide for the street, we have a problem there. So, you've thought, you've talked about something that, I mean, if we, if, and, and this may be something that we can look at, maybe it's something that, I'm just throwing this off the top of my head as well, but is there a way to dedicate an easement there? Put a condition that says that property is, is set aside for stub, but if they wanna put grass on it for now, and, and we have some sort of, you know, and I don't know if we can do that, Bob, but if we can put some sort of condition on there that that stub is an easement, the stub's not there, they can put grass on it now for a while, we, until, until the property's developed and at the time, if the property to the north is developed, that easement has to be, uh, dedicated to, as a stub through. I might buy that. Uh, but the way it sits now, I think it causes, I, you know, as a private road, yeah, I mean, if it's a public road, I'd rather break the ordinance and make a, make a public street that's, that makes the lot size smaller than it would to, to make it a private road. So, I don't, I don't know if we can do either one of those. Uh, can, can, can we do that? Can we do any of that?
You can't break the ordinance, so we'll get that right out. Um, easement's a possibility.
But if, if that's a public road, then that lot size becomes too small.
Yes.
So, we would have to make this a private road.
Yes, for that lot to, uh, for that, for that house to remain.
For that house to remain. We would have to make this a private road.
Uh, I think that was the applicant's intent for the, is to make, so that house remains, so yes.
Whether it's that house or some other house, it's, it's the same outcome.
So, this is listed as a qualified additional item, which requires findings of fact. And the, the piece of code that was referenced in fourteen-five-five, um, "Streets and new subdivisions shall connect to an existing stub. If adjacent land is undeveloped, substreets shall be provided at usable locations to provide convenient access for future developer." That seems pretty cut and dry.
However, the definition of undeveloped comes into play here. That's somebody's backyard. Is that undeveloped? Is your backyard undeveloped?
I don't need to ask.
Well, yes, my neighbor's backyard fits the same definition.
I mean, you're, I think you're right. Uh, uh, this property may not be developed, like, like Ms. Larson said, it may not be developed to its fullest potential, but it is a developed piece of property. I, I would agree with you there.
I, I, I don't think we can legitimately, I think it would be a disservice to put that out there as a precedent saying, "Oh, your one-acre backyard is, sorry, that's undeveloped." Because that's, that's, that lays down, well, look what we did last time when we had this big backyard. We called it undeveloped. And I, I think that's, you know, I think, I think that poses problems.
There's another question here too, and that's that if we do stub it and the, the property owner to the north decides that they wanna develop it differently than we intend, then we are making the presumption that, that they're going to have to follow exactly what we've laid out, which, you know, I'm kind of leaning a little bit more towards what Commissioner Jacob is saying. And, and, uh, where, where the code does say that where there's not opportunity for it to stub into another road, you know, there really, I mean, unless we lay it out, you know, in that exact, that way that we want to, there really isn't potential for it to stub into another road.
Right, and that would have to be a, a new subdivision on that property to the north. It would have to be subdivided for that street to come into this. And if that person, even if they sell and they want to build something else there, if that doesn't turn out to be another subdivision, if that just continues to be that house or some other building, or maybe they wanna put in a lap pool and sell swimming tickets, I don't know, you know, long straight piece of road, or a piece of property, then you've got, you've got a problem because you've got stub that doesn't go anywhere that is not going to go.
Right.
So, I, I, I think in, in a situation like this, I would consider that product, that property developed because it is somebody's property and they do have a house on it. It is a developed parcel. Um, and I think we have to consider, for, for my consensus, we have to consider this application for what this application is and not what may happen to some other property down the road sometime. And that goes to the driveways issue, uh, Commissioner Green mentioned. Yeah, we, we may have all these driveways sticking out, but they won't be from this application. They'll be from those other properties.
We already have a bunch of driveways sticking out.
We already, and they're already there, yeah. We don't have any more driveways.
Well, I mean, what you're talking about is, is, I mean, I can easily see that two-acre property, like what you're talking about, may not ever be residential. I know that the property's owned R one-eight. But it is Redwood Road, for heaven's sake.
It's right next to Commissioner's property already.
It's right next to the storage, storage unit. It could easily be a doctor's office, dentist's office, lawyers', you know, heaven forbid you had another lawyer's office in Salt Lake County, but never mind. But, you know, it's a, you know, public work, you know, it could be the public works building for all to know, you know? It could be the rec department. It could be anything on a two-acre property and the zoning could easily change just because of the nature of Redwood Road, so...
Which may be a better use for Redwood Road access anyway.
And the stub we requ, we could require would be, could be incompatible with any other development there.
You're right.
Anyway, so...
Well, to put, to create an imaginary easement that we, you know, leave in place for that long may be there eternally and, and it may block out, you know, a very nice potential for this lot as it is, so...
I, I don't think the easements are gonna, would work for what they're testing.
I remember briefly she said that they were planning on putting the rec center or a pool.
Right.
So, if we create an easement and then we decide, okay, nobody has to enforce this, are we gonna make them tear out the pool or the rec center that they built there for their community?
Or deny them from building it in the first place.
Or deny them, you know, then that defeats the purpose of this plan in the first minute anyways, so...
Yeah.
Commissioner Houson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ju- just curious, on page three of the staff report under criteria three, it says in the first paragraph of discussion, "The engineering and fire departments have reviewed the proposed subdivision and determine that the city will have the ability with the currently proposed and existing infrastructure to service the proposed subdivision." But then down on criteria four on page four, uh, four in the middle of the page on city code, reference B is in boy, uh, says, "Multiple access points required. A minimum of two points of ingress and egress are required for residential subdivisions unless the fire chief or his or her designee determines that more than one access point is not necessary to protect the public health and safety." But, but then I don't see any discussion as to whether the fire department feels that that's needed. So, uh, Fire Marshal Brockman, just curious on that page four, what is your assessment of that? On the two points of ingress and egress that are needed?
Generally, where two points of egress comes into play is if you're doing a subdivision with thirty or more lots on it. That, that's kind of where the, the boundary is. With the number of lots that are, are going in here, we would be able to access, uh, as long as the cul-de-sac is built, uh, to our city's standards and, and the fire code standards. Uh, we, we could accept it as, as shown.
Thank you.
And is this laid out to the city's standards, the way this is shown here?
I believe so. Uh, Mr. Cottle next to me has, uh, done a review on it and...
This is laid out on the private road standards. As you, as you're looking at this plat, this is not to public road standards. There is a considerable width difference between the two. One's forty-five, the other's seventy-five.
But it is a safety issue, whether it's a private road or a public road, if a fire truck can't get back in there. And if a fire truck can't turn around, then...
But, and that's discussed in that in criteria three, where, where fire department did say that they would be able to service it.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. It, the fire code allows for both public and private drives. And i- if you so determine that this would be built as a private drive, then they would have to meet those fire code standards for private drives, which still allows us access.
So, what's the interpretation? So, I'm gonna go back to the one that you just read about the multiple access points. And it says the owner, the last part of fourteen dot five dot five dot B, uh, under the multiple access points, it says, "The owner developer may comply with this requirement by plating a substrate that doesn't necessarily have to be built, correct? It still can be platted."
A substrate.
So, if, if, if we, if, if we so choose, we could still deal with this and we could have the stub street platted, but not, and yes, you know, Mr. Corney, you are right that it might interfere with the, 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 what's gonna happen on that point-seven acres. But if that substrate is platted, might be able to work around it.
But the stub street would only be required for a public road.
Okay, so we could wait...
If this remains a private road, then there's no reason to stub it.
Okay, all right, I get it. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacob?
Uh, just one point, um, that I'm wondering if we could bring up here. If we do approve this, this is a two, 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 two subdivision, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Could we, this is a preliminary subdivision, is that correct? That's what I thought. Um, we could have the final, uh, subdivision brought back to the planning commission just to make sure roads meet fire engine size standards and whatever else we might need to review at that time. Um, just, just to, as a, as a, I don't know, point of order, or just as an idea.
As a condition of approval.
As a condition of approval, yeah.
Yeah, I'm still torn. I agree with you that, that property to the north is a developed property. It's not an under, you know, when we talked about, when we, when I, when we were involved in dealing with the gardener village issue, there's a lot of undeveloped property there. Um, property to the back that's not, not developed, that, there were a couple others that were. Uh, that's the one that comes to mind right off the top. And when we look at the Highlands property, there's a lot of undeveloped property there. So, I know where the staff comes from, uh, I, I, I know where the staff come from in saying this is not a limited infill project. But I think we could say very easily that this is a limited infill project because there are houses, there are houses on that property. Because it's not, we're not talking about leaving a piece of farm property that's not... Uh, because it's not, we're not talking about leaving a piece of farm property that's not completely undeveloped, that doesn't have water sewer. And, and which leads to the definition of what really developed means. And at this point in time, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm leaning with you. Although I disagree with you first, I, I, I think that I'm, I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards. Saying that this, we don't know what's gonna happen on that two point one eight acres to the north. That the pro- that two point one eight acres is in fact developed. And that this project can be considered a limited infill project. Which would allow for the, the private road and allows for this kind of subdivision to go in. If we don't, and, and here's, here's my other, here's my other thought, and I have two of them, and I'll shut up. First, the, the one I have is a problem with the application itself because the corporation owns the property. Yet there wasn't signed by a corporate owner that was the applicant, applicant with the property. I have an issue with that. So that may cause me to vote against this in the first place, but, uh, must we add a condition if that gets modified before the council? But the second one is, is that this property's already come before the planning commission once. And I stood before the commission and fought the last one, to, to be honest with you, uh, and the council. If we don't allow something like this, this property could sit vacant for years. Waiting for that two point one eight acres to, to somebody to sell. And. I'm not sure that I wanna be in a position to say, we're gonna vote for this, we're gonna vote to keep a piece of property vacant for. An undetermined amount of time because we can't find the right development on a piece of property. If I had my way, I, I think we ought to develop all of that property that's, that's got the two houses. And this backyard and everything in one thing, in one fell swoop, but we know that's not possible. So I'm not sure that I'm comfortable just saying. That, that, that we're gonna leave this vacant for years because we didn't like this development and we're, we're waiting for somebody else to come along. Because this was a whole lot better than the last one that was before this council.
Commissioner Sossen. Just one quick comment, and I think it's, um, sometimes, uh, as a planning commission and as planners and as. You know, we always try to fit everything into a nice tight little box and we try to make things all, uh. We're, we're a development or developer driven planning commission in a sense. Because that's usually the type of people that come before us. And they're in the business of trying to make money on their property, so they're gonna chop it down to whatever they feel like they can sell. And, but there are a lot of people out there that are still interested in having a big lot in close proximity to the city. Where they can put a horse on it or, or something like that, you know, and, and the two properties to the north. Or, well, the property to the north is that type of property and, and, you know, if. If we approve this, it still allows that property to be that property. And it, in a sense, it, it kinda preserves it to be that type of property. And there is a market for that type of property. So I don't feel like, um. If we approve this, I don't feel like we're doing an injustice necessarily, um, to the owner of the north. And I feel like it's not doing an injustice to the city. But that's just my two cents.
Commissioner Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, the quasi judicial action that we have to take tonight requires the findings of fact, no matter. How we might emotionally feel or we know that interest is being paid and we wanna help people out, but at the same time, if we can. Through this process, see that we have. In a quasi judicial manner, satisfied the criteria, being the, the city of the, the good neighbor. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Sukoski in how can we make this work? It doesn't mean to do the, the cookie cutter, as you mentioned. If it fits the criteria and it does meet. The requirements for findings of fact, and we're thinking outside the box, not rationalizing, but seeing, okay, if we look at it from this point of view. Uh, th- this'll work. I, I'm grateful that we're taking that. That, uh, approach tonight and seeing, all right, well, how, how can we make this work? Would it make sense in this scenario? Would it make sense in that scenario? And, and I agree. Initially, I thought, well, you know, this might not meet the demands for a quasi judicial finding to be approved. Um, but I'm grateful for the, the brainstorming where, to me, we're meeting the mandates of city code. Also allowing someone that has a vision to be able to develop with friends or family or whatever they'd like to do. As a, as a place for, for kids to play that isn't right on the street. And as, uh, Commissioner Green mentioned, that the property wouldn't be sitting vacant, it's getting. Put to a higher and better use than just leaving it there. Uh, at this point in time, I, I, I would feel comfortable voting to, uh, to, to approve. Just my, my comment and feeling.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Jacob.
Thank you. Um, just, I, I will make a motion here just one second. I just wanted to echo the words of, uh, our former mayor who once said, you get what's applied for or you get what you got. We don't have the option here of saying, oh, well, we approve this with a stub street. We can approve this or we cannot approve this, and that's our choice. So with that preface. Uh, based on my reading of the staff report and the discussion this evening. Uh, I move that the planning commission approve the Legacy Grove subdivision for this property at seventy-two ninety-two South Redwood Road in the R one eight A zoning district. Uh, specifically, I disagree with the staff, I believe all four, uh, conditions have been met, as we mentioned in our discussion that. And I won't rehash those right now, but I will if I have to. Um. With the one condition, that the final subdivision plan be brought back just to make sure that everything's met the cover.
Sticking that.
Brought back to the planning commission.
Motion by Commissioner Jacob, second by Commissioner Quinney. Commissioner Pack.
Oh, thank you. Just curious, uh, if it would make Commissioner Green more comfortable if we added another. Condition of the, the, the correct signature of the corporation as opposed to a.
I was, I was just gonna move to amend that, that it included the, uh, the corporate signature on the application prior to going to the city council.
I would accept that.
Commissioner Green.
Okay then.
Okay, so now I have an amended.
Oh, wasn't it, it doesn't go to city council?
Does it go to city council, okay.
So it needs to be corrected before it comes back to planning commission if that's the.
Correct. That, that would work. That would work.
Still acceptable.
I would also, I would also move to amend, to add one finding of fact, so we can just, so we're specific. Is that we're finding the property to the north as developed and that this is a limited infill project.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Is that a condition or just a special?
That's, no, that's a motion to amend that we add, add that specific finding of fact.
To the motion.
To the motion. That it's, that the finding of fact is that this is a limited infill project and that the property to the north is developed.
Any further discussion? We're all talked out. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Motion carries six to one, uh, with Commissioner Law's casting the dissenting vote. Last item on the agenda, uh, carryover from our last meeting. Amending the West Jordan, uh, city code, section thirteen five five and thirteen five six, uh, for rural residential. And, uh, Bob, this might be the first agenda item in my five years on the commission that you have brought to us.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. As was pointed out, uh, in connection with the last meeting. We discovered that, uh, in the changeover from the two thousand one city code to the two thousand nine city code. A cross-reference to indicate that there is no longer an official RR one or RR point five or RE one. Or RE point five, but they've now become RR forty and RR twenty. So what we're doing in the, uh, section thirteen five five clarification of zoning. Is putting that statement in so that people, uh, like Commissioner Green and, and others who would get on the web and look for RR one. Could find it and would immediately find the, the cross-reference to the RR forty, which is the real zone. Uh, and, and as explained in the pre-meeting, in looking at section three, thirteen five five. Uh, we noticed that the next part of that section had to do with zoning conditions. And because West Jordan, uh, has not for several years. And really should not engage in conditional zoning. Uh, we thought it would be useful to amend that part of thirteen five five as well. To recognize that there are zones that have been given conditions. And we don't wanna tamper with those, but to also eliminate any possibility of future conditions on zoning. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions if what I've said is not clear.
Any questions on that? Very well. Uh, our public has left us, but, uh, we'll open it up to the public. And go ahead and close it. Bringing it back to the commission for any further discussion or disengagement. Commissioner Pack.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence explanations received today from Mr. Thorup. I move that the planning commission for a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed tax amendments as discussed in this report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Sossen. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries seven to zero. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Um, anybody else have anything?
Move adjourned.
I, any opposed to that? We stand adjourned until, uh, July twenty-first unless it turns out we don't have anything on our agenda. Which I understand tomorrow's the deadline for that. Enjoy your July.